The meeting of May 17, 2021 is called to order. Tracy invitation please.
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege to be here together, gather. We ask that you continue to be with the council as they make decisions for the city of Vernon. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
How many come to you?
No sir.
Owen Bailey?
No.
Mayor of the board.
Okay, it was brought to my attention today, I guess you all have heard it, Mr. James Foswell passed away. And it was brought to my attention today that some years ago when the new firehouse was built, it was dedicated to him. There's a plaque that his daughter has, you know, with his name on it. So I thought that we should maybe get a sign or something to put on the firehouse since it was dedicated to him. That would act, you know, just show our support. Just wanted to bring that to the council's attention and see what y'all thought on that.
Y'all think about the same type of signs we put on the ball field, on something like that?
Or would you rather have something more like the Bronwyn that we ordered for Hernandez's boy?
I think something I could see on the side of the firehouse. Something y'all could see on the pointy drop. What do you think, Chat?
I said to y'all.
Well, we need something we can know. If we're gonna dedicate it, you can't.
I don't make necessarily orange and blue or anything like.
Not orange.
We can change colors, but you don't want it full base where you see it from the.
But can't you put that by you on it?
Yeah, we can put it.
Yeah, and it would look nice, but it's something we wanted to say his name. It was already dedicated to it years ago, but it was just never a sign or nothing was never done. Okay, and then we did a couple of weeks ago have a dedication to the two trees on the city square for Horizon QR. Their family came and, you know, it was just private. It was very sweet. And that is all I'll say, so I don't cry. I have not been to the cemetery to start the list of names, Ms. Rhonda. I admitted up front, so I've not done it, but I did get your email that you sent with the. I haven't printed it.
Talking to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but I did get that email so that I could take it and hopefully list five aerial that you have.
Well, I think by overlaying the survey on the aerial map, we can make a few key measurements like to some real prominent headstones. And then from there, you're just gonna have to fiddle with it, I guess.
So hopefully I will start on that soon, but I have finals through Wednesday. And that's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the mayor? Attorney report?
So I just remembered that I forgot to call the lady at DOT about your traffic signal. Otherwise I have big issues. We were able to get the title issues on the cemetery cleared up with a, an additional deed from the cemetery trustee. There was a kind of a discrepancy between the original legal description from the 1800s and the legal description written about the surveyor. But that's been resolved, so we're one step closer to clearing up issues with the cemetery. Speaking to the school board's attorney and also to Mr. Taylor about the shady growth part, getting the school board to release their reversionary interest in that property so that we can get the part qualified for a FERDA grant. Mr. Taylor has wanted some time to talk to his principals to see what they're actually using the bill for, what they anticipate needing the bill for. So there should be a problem with, you know, signing that deed over, but they would probably want a new animal court in place about the use and maintenance and that sort of thing.
Why is that coming up now? Maybe they always got grants.
So FERDA.
Dr. FERDA, where they got over grants and.
There's been a FERDA grant on that property, that's what I'm saying. And within the, um, the 90s, I think, but they changed their rules and school boards are not eligible for FERDA grants. So because the school.
Well, it wasn't the school board, it was the city.
When the school board deeded that to the city, it was back in the early 90s, they retained a reversionary interest. So if the grounds ceased to be used, at least 50% of the time for youth recreation activities, the property would go back to the school board. That little interest that the state says disqualifies us from the FERDA grants, we'll have to give them the release by date.
Why do you understand, because I knew they had that company.
Yes. And that there are, and that came up in the town search, there are still restrictions on the property from the previous FERDA grant. That's the issue now. And that's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the attorney? Clerk support?
As our mayor said, James Foswell depends, like, his funeral arrangements are set for tomorrow from 1:00 to 2:00, the viewing. And they're gonna have a graveside service at 2:00. I plan on going to the visitation and Jason's going to go as well. He may stay for the graveside service.
You're gonna change as you're talking, ma'am?
James Foswell.
Where is it gonna be?
Vernon.
The hill? His mansion here. You?
Here is in.
Vernon.
Pill's funeral home.
Oh.
And the graveside service at the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
And then what time?
1:00 to 2:00.
Is it viewing?
View, yeah.
Tomorrow. We are waiting on, actually Candace and Becky and I are working to get together with the county administrator for code administration and animal control. And as soon as Candace has some dates available, we will schedule that.
Next week or?
Uh, thanks. Also, the city square, they're going to be doing some ground sampling this week. They'll be there the 19th through the 20th.
So yeah?
Yes, yes.
Anybody have anything for the clerk? Fire chief support?
Tanker is getting fixed tomorrow. It's gonna be, probably have to get left because it's more.
Can you?
It's more damage than what they thought it was. It's the whole transfer case and water there, they're gonna have to switch out the piston that's down there. Because eventually it's gonna go off as well. Do y'all want them to go ahead and fix the truck, like, rest of the stuff that's wrong with it? There's more to it. When they went over it, well, took it over the other day.
So there's more than just the pump?
Well, there's more stuff, there's a lot of stuff wrong with it.
Like one of the things, there's a oil leak that needs to be fixed?
Yeah, oil leak. Brakes. It's a lot more. He said, yes, it probably hasn't been touched since then in possession of it, because it looks bad up there.
In the meantime, if you need a tanker, who are you contacting?
I'll have to call everybody around.
Is that a tanker truck?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
You got to have it. You know, it's your call. You're the fire chief, the thing is, I look at it now, speaking to the council, you know, I don't spend $15,000, $20,000, you know, you need your truck, you know? So, you know, you let Tracy know about what it's gonna cost, but you got that.
Did they give you an estimate?
Not yet. They just sent it back, so there's nothing they can do with right then.
I'll say get it back on the road.
Okay.
Well, I still, how much it'll cost just to get it back.
That's what Joey said, find out. I mean, you don't need the mirrors cleaned or anything, but we needed operation on it back on the road.
All right. Other than that, we had a couple of firearms, we helped out. Hit some crossroads with a house fire. We got a training meeting tomorrow.
What time are you training at? Is it 7:00?
7:00. Now we said we don't, we're spending no $15,000, but what if they come up and say, hey, it's $20,000, we'll have a wrap. We got, we still got half the trip.
Well, that's what, wait, what Joey said, and I was saying, we need, I mean, they're gonna get tagged up.
They're gonna tell you what's wrong with it. I'm gonna look at like what I see is what needs to be done. Because of course, they don't do like any other dealership, they may be like, hey, if you need this.
And they're sending you that and you don't really need it.
The pump being tore up by another, by one of our individuals right at his stomach, fire department, with the fire department.
Right.
How, what are we gonna do as far as this that goes? I mean, because that wasn't his responsibility, he didn't tell him that he could take the truck. And why that?
No, I don't.
Well.
Oh, you didn't ever tell Joey?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Well.
So individual firefighter worked on the truck.
No.
No, he worked on it.
No, he worked on it. He took us.
Using it for community service. And it kind of.
Without the chief's permission?
Without permission. He didn't tell me this after the program. And he had left the station, it was going elsewhere. It was just like, it was broken at the station.
Same pump we've already paid to.
To be fixed.
Do we have it at the same mechanic that was on?
Well, it's at the station.
But is it going back to the same person that did the pump?
Yeah, it's gotta go today, unless we drive it.
But it was a new, but the pump is torn up and it was a new pump that was on it?
It's a transfer case.
The transfer case that turns the pump? Okay.
Well, there was no type of warranty on that?
No, no.
The only issue is, we, we still would have sent the tanker to fill it up. It was at the middle school, it was for the school. We still, we would have sent the tanker to fill it up. We wouldn't have, we always do.
Also, we got there, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Vernon always does it.
Yeah, but that's a. We shouldn't do that. That's like us filling up pools, we can't do that. But I could. So it's the same kind of drill, you know, you spill up a dump tank, which they didn't use the water that was in the dump tank, because how nasty it was. Water doesn't, the truck ain't clean.
And I cleaned the water.
Mr. Rivera?
Well, this case has to work out. I will bring it up and work out. It's good for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Recreation report?
The USAF tournament has been rescheduled to June the 12th. And Timothy has scheduled a football and cheer clinic for June the 26th.
For the tournament, it's been changed?
Yes ma'am. It was originally scheduled for the 26th.
And it's June 4th?
June 12.
June 12.
And when did you say the clinic was?
June 26th. That's all.
What it works for? Uh, I don't really have a whole lot. The only thing, only good news I have is the $3,600 pump that I got approved for. I actually got it for $2,000, I think it was.
$2,800.
Yeah, I got it cheaper. We picked up $100. Uh, it was actually good that way. So that leaves us long graph.
Anybody have anything to tell the board?
I'm like, well, I have a thing, Ms. Rhonda, I have your pump fixed.
I'm sorry?
Pulpit for the roses, I'll have it fixed tomorrow.
Oh, thank you very much. But, but my question is, what's the deal with your truck? Are you getting a truck yet? Do we know anything?
I guess we're waiting on it from the county.
They have a meeting at thir- tomorrow, Thursday night, Thursday night.
Thursday night at 9:00 in the morning.
Okay, because I'm real interested in the DPR, okay? Which hinges on the truck.
We'll know tomorrow, Thursday.
You should go to the county commissioner meeting Thursday morning at 9:00 AM, 9:00 AM, since I'll be at work. You should go, I'll be doing AP panel.
If they say yes, you get your DPR. If they say no, let's use some sticks.
Public participation, Ms. Tracy Andrews?
Um, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to come. I'm Tracy Andrews, external affairs manager for Gulf Power in Chipley. And so I don't know if this has ever happened, but I wanted to take the time to come and give you an update on some significant things that's happening at Gulf Power. Um, and I guess if you have any questions, then at the end, you're welcome to ask those questions. But as of January the 1st of 2021, Gulf Power is now officially merged with Florida Power and Light. And so this merger is important because it actually will create operational and financial benefits for our customers. While we did receive the federal energy regulatory commissions approval back October 15th of 2020, it became actually official January the 1st of 2021. And so FERC was the only agency required to approve the legal merger of the two companies, which is Gulf Power and FPNL. However, for us to actually operate as one company, one electric utility company in the state of Florida, uh, we will have to go obtain the Florida Public Service Commission approval to operate under one set of rates. So FPNL and Gulf Power have reviewed the requirements for that combined rate review earlier this year. And so we hope to go before the commission really soon, and those rates would actually go in effect January of 2022. So, um, this kind of would align now, um, the plan for Gulf Power to then begin operating as a division of Florida Power and Light in January of 2022. So it's important, um, I guess this evening for you to understand that no matter what the brand will be on our shirts or the brand that's gonna be on our hats, or whatever that may be, our commitment to our customers and our communities will remain the same. Um, our crews will continue to operate out of the Chipley office there. And we will continue to have employees working in the communities like myself and others to provide reliable, clean energy and build and grow our communities here within Northwest Florida. So just a couple of things I wanted to share that I think is important. Um, Gulf Power is definitely generating more clean, um, energy than we've ever had before. We're putting more emissions-free solar energy on the grid. And we, um, have developed and operated more solar energy centers throughout Northwest Florida. Each solar energy center will generate about 74.5 megawatts of energy. It's enough to power about 15,000 homes annually and actually remove, uh, which is equivalent to removing 26,000 cars off the road every year. So I've had the pleasure to work closely with our first energy site, energy center that went in in Jackson County, Blue Indigo Energy Center, and it actually went online April the 1st of 2020. And so we have two additional sites that will actually go online by the end of 2021. One in Escavia County, another in Jackson County. But we have about nine other solar energy centers that's under development here without Northwest Florida. So, uh, this plan or solar development aligns with Florida Power and Light's 30 by 30 commitment. And that is to put 30 million solar panels in by the year 2030. So we are, uh, on our way, well into making sure that we meet that deadline. Uh, another thing that we've done in the midst of all of this is retirement of coal. Uh, Gulf Power has converted our largest generated facility, which is located in Pensacola, Florida. Uh, Plant Chris now runs 100% produced US natural gas. And so we permanently retired that to the end of 2020. And, uh, the plant that's closest next to us would be Plant Smith, that's there in Panama City, has already been running entirely on natural gas for the last few years. And so some of the benefits to the conversion was definitely to reduce about 40% of our plant's carbon emissions rate, uh, which that total is about equivalent to removing about 297,000 cars off the road each year. Um, one thing that we're proud about is our reliability. We realized that we have improved our service reliability for our customers by 43% uh, since becoming a part of the Florida Power and Light family. Um, we're bringing more low-cost energy and greater resiliency to our customers in North Florida with the construction of a new 176-mile heart and 170, 161 KV transmission line that will connect Florida Power Light's energy grid to Gulf Power's energy grid system. And construction on this connection began at the end of 2020. So we're investing about $200 million between 2020, 2021 to make energy grids stronger, more resilient, and definitely more reliable. And what that looks like is replacing about 4,800 transmission lines, um, transmission wooden structures with concrete or steel structures, hardening main lines to extreme wind load criteria, installing equipment that is able to isolate and avoid some outages and restore power remotely with self-healing networks. And we will have placed more than 5,000 lateral, automated lateral switches in services by the end of this year. And so we're very, um, happy about the, the fact that, you know, if you were here, and many of you were here in 2018, Hurricane Michael was, um, an unprecedented storm. And I, I was so proud of the fact that we were able to work safely within these communities with all the volunteers and all the workers that we had on ground to help bring our power back up to as many as we could take power within a, a short span, I would say less than two weeks. Um, and, and so these types of improvements will help us moving forward. I hope we never have a hurricane to that magnitude ever here in Florida. But nevertheless, we're gonna do everything that we can to place stronger or reliable things in place to help during those times. Um, there's a few things that I wanted to share from maybe a front office standpoint. Because we keep the customers at the center of everything that we do, and we strive to continually improve our customer experience. Um, we were able to, um, install a new mobile app, an improved website experience, uh, which helps you to easily manage your accounts online, easy to understand billing. Of course, we've increased some self-service options, which include, uh, new enhancements like bill predictor, uh, schedule your online payments, uh, pay your bill over the phone. Um, those are some of the things that we've done, um, to help improve that. Uh, we actively, um, work, our employees actively work and volunteer to build strong communities through partnering, partnerships, um, and to create opportunities. And so what happened in 2021, I can say at the beginning of 2021, our plan, our, our goal, um, hopeful to bring some relief to, since the pandemic in 2020, and it's still kind of spilled over in 2021. Uh, when we were faced with a challenge last year, we immediately, um, introduced COVID policies to assist our customers during the pandemic. Assistant, um, included like suspension of disconnects. Uh, we did not disconnect or cut for non-pay for eight months of last year. And we gave payment extensions, uh, payment arrangements. We formulated a bill relief program to give customers who were seriously past due up to $200 bill credit just to get their bill current. We contributed more than a million dollars to area organizations that were addressing critical needs, uh, like United Way, Project Share, Boys and Girls Clubs, and actually grants for small businesses. And so for us, what does that mean for us? We have like tri-county community council. Tri-county community council assists and helps within this region. And so some of that money was filtered there to help us locally here within this community. So we continue to look for ways through local economic development teams to support existing businesses and to bring new sustainable business opportunities to the region. Another way that we connect, uh, some of our regional states leaders together is through our economic symposium. This year will be held in late September. And if you've never attended the economic symposium, I would encourage you to register and to attend that, uh, that, that symposium. We found it to be, uh, very beneficial, uh, pulling all your community leaders together. People from this region, Northwest Florida come in, and we talk about real things that can impact your community and better help you as you move forward to build together. And so we've done a lot of things, uh, we've expanded certain programs here. We have our Florida First Site Program, which helps us to certify sites that are shovel-ready for businesses who wants to relocate and grow within our community. Our foundation contributed or distributed more than, uh, $1.4 million in shareholder dollars to actively provide a local organization with funds to make a lasting impact. And so, uh, we're very dedicated to the communities in which we serve. And in closing, I just want to thank you again for your time. I just want to say that, uh, we've seen a lot of changes. I know that I have since Hurricane Michael and these last few years at Gulf Power. And I just wanted you to know that, uh, we are here for you and that we continue to remain committed to you. And we definitely look forward to working with you in the future. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. Sure. I know we spoke, um, and we're talking about the rates going down some. So when, um, y'all are officially on January 2022, when everything is under the Florida Power Act, will the rates stay approximately the same, or do you see an up or down?
Um, what the forecast has been, and I believe there was a lady that I've seen here earlier, she may be gone, said, hey, I got a call. Said my residential bill is going down. Um, and that is true. What, what I have done is I've reached out to your city clerk, Ms. Tracy Walker. And I told her, as soon as we get all the details about the city of Vernon and we have all your data, I will come and sit with you and kind of give you a four-year projection of what those rates will look like. There's some rates I would say that we may have that they don't have, but there's some rates they have that we don't have. So we were acquired, so we will merge over and we will obtain some of their rates. But they have some of the lowest rates here, um, and so I, I will definitely make sure that you all are very aware of what that's gonna look like and how that's gonna impact your budget.
Thank you. You gonna keep your name in the file or is it gonna change to Florida?
So we will be a division of Florida Power and Light, and that was, no matter what is on our hard hats or what is on our shirts, our shirts will be, we will be FPNL. So we will lose our name.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Dawn McDonald?
Good evening. Uh, good evening, members, council members, staff and attendees, residents. Tonight, I wanted to give you an update and ask for action on our county-wide broadband project that we'll be working with you on. I don't know, um, this is my first time in Vernon, and so I'm, I'm your planner. And this has been an interesting, um, learning experience for me that our code, the county's code and plan are your code and plan. And so day to day, we work with Ms. Walker and we review development orders and assist. And we've been, you know, very busy. And so we will, we'll receive inquiries about properties. And so I'll send, um, we work cooperatively. So even though our code and plan are the same, um, I always defer to the city in case there are ordinances or other things that I may not know. So if there's a customer or they call and is interested in a conference. So if there's a customer or they calls and is interested in participating in the city, we help as much as we can. But I always say it's always a good, good idea to, you know, discuss your projected project with, with the city clerk. So we try to work together cooperatively. And we do on a daily, weekly basis. And then for these larger projects like this, what we'll do is we will hold the meetings, we'll handle the advertising, the planning commission at the county acts as your recommending agency, and then you make the final decisions. So in this case, we've got a broadband project. And how, how is internet service here in Vernon?
I haven't had a problem with it.
And one of the, one of the main books of, of the broadband project is to introduce internet services in more remote areas of the county and to offer an additional service, an available service to customers. And so what we're doing is we're slowly working towards building a county-wide network of internet throughout the county. And so the first step was we received a one-point-five-million-dollar grant from the state. It's a rural infrastructure grant. And that money will go, includes planning and also construction. And so we hired WildStar Networks to assist us. And so the first step was finding the existing structures, so high places basically, where we could, where WildStar could place their antennas with their clip. And so fire, fire water towers, we even offered billboards. I don't think that's going to happen, but, so we were looking at, at structures where there was elevation where it could be a clear signal and so that a network could be built around the county. The second step was the case, we, WildStar required towers for better signal in areas or for, to increase the speed of the internet, then they were looking at tower locations. And then that's where we began looking at some of our county-owned properties and other properties. But right now, we're focused on county-owned properties. But through this process, we learned that one of the sites here in Vernon is actually owned by the school board. And so that was one of, one of the pieces of information that we learned. And so, and that's part of the fact finding and information gathering. So we started by looking at existing sites and now county-owned properties where, and these are proposed locations at this time, and where the consultants felt that they could build a network. And they're looking at specific things, one of them being elevation, another is clearance. So they need a clear area and they need flexibility also. And so within, within the proposed county sites, there are actually potential power locations. So nothing is fixed at this time, but how, how we're working through this now is to lay the foundation of the planning so that we could move forward quickly when the time comes through construction. Construction won't take long at all. I think it takes just a few days. And the towers are towers as defined in our code, but they're more like large flag poles, and they're about a hundred and ninety feet high, and they have a footprint of twenty by twenty concrete. And the area around the towers is approximately thirty by thirty. So it's a very small footprint. And within these proposed properties, there's, you know, these properties are not undeveloped. They're vacant property. They've been used for other purposes in the past where they're disturbed. We have some borrowed bits. We have some fire stations also. And, and so we're just, we're looking at all that. And so we're not looking at replacing any uses. We're looking at the towers being an accessory or ancillary use on the site. So the parks will remain the parks. Some of these potential locations for towers, for the poles are, they're away from activity. There's, there's setbacks. These properties also have a lot still, even with Hurricane Michael, have a lot of vegetation at the periphery or the perimeter of the property. So they are, they do have screening. And so we, we're looking at that as far as, we're looking at developed or disturbed sites. We have, we have more of a, if you look at it as, as like redevelopment in some way of re-planning. And so if you don't have the same concerns you would as properties that are undeveloped, vacant, that may have wetlands or flood plain, these areas may have small portions of the flood plain, but the, but the towers would be, poles would be located away from it. And that just makes sense for other reasons. And so that's where we are now. And so to begin this process, we are going, we have to meet the code requirements. And so any of the tow, anytime any tower is built, and that's a commercial tower, an emergency tower that may be built for communications by local government, any tower requires special permission. And so what I'm asking tonight is for approval for special permission to install the towers on these two sites. And also there are, the consultant also submitted a major development review application. And it's, it's, like I said, it's a fixed, it's not a fixed location at this point. So if we need to move it around on the site, I can relay that information back to the consultants and that was, that will be your recommendation. The variance request with the development review is to waive the vegetated buffering requirements that we require around the base of towers. The consultants need access to the poles. And the pole, they're not like cellular tower facility that requires fencing and because of electrical equipment, these sites have minimal equipment on the ground. It's just basically a pole, and there's an electrical pole also. And so that's what we're, we're doing now. We had a special meeting of the planning commission on November tenth, the community act. So we had a neighborhood information meeting, and it was also a public workshop on November sixth for the community to discuss and to bring up issues. And some of the issues brought up by residents were, you know, we really didn't have a, a concrete location for the towers yet. And where were we going to place them? Another concern was FAA requirements for any of the poles that would be located in the fire stations or that would be nearby an airstrip or an airport that could interfere with a heliport. So we do, we can always move those, those poles. We also are not required, but we can also paint the poles, we can place a strobe light so for additional safety. Another issue were health concerns. And at the planning commission special meeting on November tenth, the consultant from WildStar, Nate Cordero, was able to provide a lot of information that's not within my, my capabilities to explain, you know, unfortunately, but he was able to talk about speeds and frequencies. But for health reasons, there, there's a very low signal and a low power. And so that's what I'm able to share with you. And so the, the Board of County Commissioners, they recommended approval of thirteen sites. And now I'm with you all regarding site seventeen and eighteen. And I'll be visiting the town of Leebro in June to request approval for a tower site there. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll try and answer them. And, and if I have any questions regarding the frequencies and signals, I'll have to get back to you on that.
And the two sites are off of Moss Hill Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that at the park and then by the school? Is from what it looks like? So they won't be like, they'll be away from the school and away in the back of the park or area?
Yes, ma'am. The, the sites, they're both designated as public land use, and that's pretty typical of the remainder of the sites. And as you can see from page three of the site proposal that the consultants provided, the setback, and, and see, they're using existing driveways and parking also, so that assists. So, and it's also going to reduce our costs. So we can, we can focus more of our efforts and resources on the technology. And if the site is not working and if they can move it, or they may, they may choose a completely different site as they build this network. But on this site plan, this, I want to say potential location, it looks like it's three-hundred-and-forty-seven feet from the entrance, six-hundred-and-twelve feet on one side, two-hundred-and-ninety-six feet from the rear, fifty-two feet from the side. But there's quite a bit of room, I mean, there's quite a bit of area between the potential tower location and the road, Moss Hill Road. And again, he's, he's trying to avoid wetlands or flood plain areas, but if this site is not preferable and you can move it on the site to a more acceptable location, I can send that information back.
I was just, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be, you know, close to the, to the areas occupied, but you know what I mean, the areas.
Well, on the proposal A, it says Hunter Park, and on B, it says MS Building.
I think I would maybe have clerical error.
Okay, well, what?
A is actually the school. That's, I thought that's A.
Okay.
During, okay, so seventeen, let me see, I just thought that.
Yeah, he's a, he's category City of Vernon Public.
Page two.
They said, page two. It says Hunter Park. And then on B, it says MS Building.
On B?
Yes. But they're actually completely separate locations.
So site, site seventeen is the school?
Yes.
And is that used for park uses? What exactly? Because we only have, we only have the paper to work from. Is it open to the public?
The school?
Yes.
It's a, it's a.
That's what we do on fireworks now. We don't know that.
Wait, on B?
This is, yeah.
Is that where you're talking to the water pump?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's set the board down there.
It's your school board's property.
Just a heads up.
Yeah, I guess that's supposed to be.
I mean, the school board is going to have to prove to you.
Right. Right, and they're in support of the broadband project?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're just signing agreements with them? And so we work.
And also on page two of each of these, just so I'm clear, the current land use is set at one thing, proposed, and it says future land use category will be City of Vernon, public on one and semi-public on the other. So it's the land use going to be changed over to Vernon?
No, I mean, it will remain City of Vernon Public.
No, but that's.
No, it's not, it's not B, I'm telling you. This is not city property either, either one that I'm looking at.
That's not our property there.
No.
Neither of them.
I don't think, I don't think none of that.
All of that's counted.
But the land use is, is because it's within your city limits, that designation is public, City of Vernon Public for both of those, even though it's owned by the school district and.
Okay, well, I guess what's confusing is because it says current land use, MS Building, future land use, City of Vernon Public, semi-public. And something similar, we're A.
Yeah, I think it must be an error because of waters. Because what, what matters is your, your land use map to make sure that the uses is there's that all up through your code. So I think you must have, yeah, that should just be public there on page two of Vernon B.
So this big tower would be in Hunter's Park? Is it at Hunter's Park or is it at the AMS Building?
They said Hunter's Park.
It looks like it's closer to Hunter's Park to me. Well.
That, that's, these properties we're looking at are actually county home, not.
Yeah, no, that's ours.
Yeah, the school district owns number seventeen, so that's Vernon A, the first site?
And that is.
Okay. And we found that out.
Yeah, where's his question?
Our, our county attorney, Mr. Fuquay, works also for the school district. And so he sent an updated deed to us, that we, we had the deed that was online, the information available to us. So he was able to provide additional information. But that will require the additional agreement and working with the school district on the place. But because it's within the district, within your jurisdiction, you all actually make the final approvals as far as can the use occur? Could a tower be installed on the site?
I don't see how we could approve them if it belongs to the county. I mean, I'm getting lost in that.
You're just looking for our approval for the.
For the use, yes, sir. Every, every, any tower within any land use category requires special permission of the board, in, in this case, the council. So this allows the public participation, the newspaper advertising, letters are, are sent out to all residents within five-hundred feet of the properties because you're asking for a special use that's not typically allowed. And so that's the special exception side. The development side is more, now that would be also approved by you all, but we'd be working with the school district on that. And the variances are attached to that. Because we are located, even the county-owned properties, anything we did within our county property, the school district, we still require city approval.
I, I think our, just our concern is on the use at Hunter's Park, as Joey mentioned, there's a splash pad that we've been approved for to going in. And then, and it's, and it's not a large piece of property. And then at the school, the fireworks are shot in a certain area. And so I know that may seem silly, but that's a big deal for our town, you know, to have the fireworks. And so we don't want to lose our splash pad and lose the fireworks yet.
So now on Vernon B, number eight, our site number eighteen, so you're right, this is a smaller site. Where, where is the splash pad proposed? If we look at that page three of the consultant's process plan?
I don't believe any of us has seen that plan. That was going through the county.
Okay. Come on, the county, we'll talk to about that. I don't remember too well about that.
I believe it was a grant that they got for the parks, and we approved it to go in because it'll run on our water and whatnot. And so I just don't, I don't want below it to be built and then, whoops, now we, now there's a splash pad. Coming about of it.
So I can talk to our grants coordinator and she most likely is the person to talk to to get the plan so that we can compare the actual site plan. So you approved with the grant and most likely there's some design plans or some site plans?
We haven't seen where it's going to be placed yet, but we know that it, we know it's a small area and so...
So number eighteen is Hunter's Park. Is that, is that right? Is that true?
School, it's not a committee? A.
I think the one we have is EMS building is actually the park, Hunter's Park?
Yes.
So that's eighteen, Hunter's Park. I believe.
I'll definitely, I'll definitely find that information. I'll start with, I'm happy to be shocked.
And the school board is gracious enough to let us do our fireworks and park and all that, but it is a big thing for our town and we just, we don't want an interference there.
And from what we're looking at, it looks like that tower pad is going to be right where we shoot fireworks off? Right behind the water tower.
And you see, what would be ideal is if they can place their equipment on the water tower and if that works appropriately, then we wouldn't have to...
I wondered because you said that that's what they were trying to do, okay.
And they did sign an agreement with you all regarding working together on broadband communications, but they're not going to place a tower or a pole where you all are not in favor of placing it. And so they did need a tower there. It looked like there was another location to the west, just on the other side of that flood plain area. On page three, it looks like there's a clearing area, cleared area over there.
Is that where the EMS building?
And is that, is that the high school to the west? Also, is that still the high school property?
History, um, Vernon A?
I'm sorry, we should have a power point. See, there's a, there's a cleared area there. That, that might, that might be a more acceptable location. Would that, would that interfere with the fireworks there?
I know, they were just going on.
Well, may I make a suggestion that y'all form a subcommittee and go with her or whoever's going to be placing it and physically see where this stuff is and sort of looking at.
It's not...
And that way you can make it better. Yeah. Actually be there and say, okay, Scott, have you had somebody see? And to know exactly where that splash pad is.
And if it's on the water tower, that would be...
Now, that works.
Yeah.
I don't think it's tall, I don't think it's tall.
Huh?
I don't think it's tall. The tower's not tall. Not out there. Not tall.
Or middle, the high school and middle school, it's going to suck the bottom.
But y'all own that property, don't you, where the tower sits?
Yeah, but where she's talking about. Yeah, she's talking about the hill way back there.
Behind?
Yeah.
And that would be a school board question to see what they're utilizing and what they're sure. But obviously, we want to work and get it out. We just want to make sure that when they're placed, they're, they're not interfering with other things.
So where are they, where is the, where is the?
It's actually, it's actually across the street, but every, I mean, it's, it lines up all the way down Mossill Road here. Um, here, so that, they're lined up all the way, people are in the park, you know, so everywhere, this whole area. Yeah, that's the water tower there.
So where, where the actual fireworks shot from?
Now, Jason, take that.
Well, I just showed you.
Right here.
Yeah, and the whole area. They said they built it up all up through here, they go over and then they put a ring up here.
So that might be if the school board was...
If it's right there, you're good shooting.
I mean, and it's their property, we just want to try to all work together and do everything in the best location.
What's the thing? It'd be great if things actually sold up and...
See, I said it's pretty familiar.
Let's see what you're talking about, but... My suggestion, I don't know how anybody else feels about Ms. McDonald, but with this paperwork, I mean, you know, it's just, it's not worked right, and I get what you're saying about that, but it looks to me like maybe we need to get together with somebody and sort this out in a workshop where we can... I mean, we can say it looks like it's going here, going there, and we won't give it until we actually know.
Probably just need to walk out there with somebody and physically see where they want to place it to know.
Well, and he's actually visited the sites, he's been out to these sites and this is what he proposed, but he doesn't know about city activities.
Well, nobody from the city has been out there. That's what I'm saying, somebody from the city needs to go out there alone with, with the person that designed this and...
And the school.
And the school. And the school or personally, yeah.
Personally, I, you know, I will support any way that we can, but I'm sure everybody else does the same way, but until we know exactly, other than, you know, just property law, where something's going on, I don't think that we can approve it.
Well, exactly, that was one of the concerns that we heard throughout the processes. We can't guarantee that this is the site yet, because as they build the network, we may not need a tower here. And so if, if the water tower is used, that might be more acceptable. Maybe if it doesn't interfere with the splash pad, Hunter's Park is a better location. It's going to depend on elevations and how clear the signal is. And so, I mean, yeah, I guess we're asking right now for approval for a proposed, of a proposed site. But, and that's the thing, with eighteen total sites, and we figured that looking at, in this case, we thought the school, county property, until we were provided with accurate information, we may not use all of these sites, you know, some may not materialize. But I will definitely turn that information, take that information back to the county and the consultants.
And this is all, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but as the mayor said, we need to know if we're going to land the splash pad or not, I think. I don't think anybody has a problem with approving it if it's not going to interfere with...
Well, the thing is, she can go back since she knows about splash pad now for the county. We got both sides, we can look, but somebody needs to get with the city employee, go out there. If it don't bother the splash pad, the council has no problem with it, go on at Hunter's Park. But the splash pad is a grant that's been approved by the county to go at Hunter's Park. We do know that, the city knows that. And I guess you haven't been updated on it, but the other site is our Fourth of July. Does the fireworks bother the tower out there? I don't know. So, you're going to have to ask the people that's putting it up. But our Fourth of July was counseled one year and the city took a pounding on it. And, uh, big time, and, uh, the council members did. So, you know, that's on the splash right now, we got, well, the Fourth of July is on that hill, it's always been on that hill. Uh, but like you said, it don't bother the Fourth of July, it don't bother the splash pad. You know, the council probably, you know, I don't have a problem. But that's a question you'll have to take back to the county and find out.
And I think the consultants too, yeah, to find out how that, how that works, if that would even be a good location, knowing, you know, yeah, it only happens once a year, but still, it's important.
But I think you're going to find out, the water tower's not too tall, it's not high enough, like Jimmy said. And two, uh, the city's got a contract with Jim Mars that typically takes care of them water towers, and you're going to have to probably get up with him and see if it's going to interfere with him. You know, so there's a lot of issues, you know, that's got to be rolled out.
Right, and this is really the second county that will have a broadband network. Walton County is just about to go live, so they've gone through this whole process with WildStar. And so WildStar is learning from the process there and moving into Washington County with the same, with the same goals of, you know, offering a service where there is none or an alternate service. But yeah, you don't know how, we're, we're a little bit different than Walton County, so we're not as developed. And there's, I'm sure as they work through this, they're going to learn even more lessons as they move forward. But the equipment, we keep saying it's new technology, it's new for us and how it's being applied, but it really is old technology and a combination of technologies to help us. But if you, if you'd like me to return, we worked on, we have a piece on the agenda next month. I'd be glad to, and maybe I'll have some more answers about, about this, but, and I apologize. I've been here almost two years, and so there's been so many things happening. And some, there's so many grants and so much happening. And so I apologize, I didn't know about the splash pad or any of those plans, but we'll definitely look into that and I'll let WildStar know, definitely.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. New business, number one, reviewing more bits for signature on mine.
It's, it's this whole package. Whole thing. It's all in there.
It's just about all of it, but I can see a price for it.
It's too heavy, that is too much.
I made most. Motion to approve which bid?
I think it's been all of them, which one you come from that? Yeah, there's three bids in the packet, there's three of them.
Legendary. I made most of the approved legendary on length.
Second? Discussion? I have a quick question, nobody else there? And I know that it was all out in a previous meeting. At the bottom of this, of legendaries, it says contract total. And I know that was some questions about that. Be fair.
About during the winter months when it doesn't need to be cut and things like that. But during the winter months, we, we don't just go out and cut the grass, we will go out and pick up the limbs. We make sure there's no, nothing on the grave sites, we'll blow them off. I mean, we don't just go out there and stand around and collect the money. If you see that you want us to see it sort of be green, then that's in with the contract. That's, I mean, whatever it is you, in that aspect. I mean, we don't just stand out there. They're, they're going to go out there and they'll clean up the fenced road during the wintertime so it won't be like all messed up, I mean, and keep it clean, so that if you parked over there at Circle H and they say, well, you know, they have that contract, but they sure ain't doing that during the winter, why are we paying for it? That kind of aspect, because everybody does stuff in their yard during the wintertime. And that's when everybody comes out for Christmas and clean up after Christmas flowers, you know, and different things like that that have flown around and stuff.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Pose? Motion to carry? Number two, motion to approve purchasing five sets a year for fire department.
I made most of the approved.
Discussion?
I'm actually, Shaq, wouldn't like to go as it is, close with me, he's right here.
All right. I really prefer to go with the MBS. Got three quotes for him, because I have purchased, well, Bay County and other departments has gotten from this guy, orders came back messed up. So I really don't want to use this guy, but that's what y'all want, we will. I prefer to use the MBS guy. And I would, I mean, it's listed, start from three thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents to two thousand and seventy-eight dollars. All right, for that, you're going to be, just like, pay what you get, get what you pay, so...
Is that each one?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
That's for a complete set of here.
What, what?
One complete set.
What's the one you didn't, what's the one you didn't want to use?
Can either or not MBS?
Yeah, the ones that don't have MBS at the top of it.
Yeah, between you.
That's NAPR.
Yes.
MTS, alert system.
And this is something that they need because their year is expired.
Oh yeah, we already...
We know that.
When I'm asking, is the budget, can your budget afford it?
Yes.
It wants to charge it, yes.
Shaq, what's the difference in the, because
Yummy?
The thirty, they're, the ones that say MBS on them, so some of, one of them's
I think I got like...
Thirty-two, twenty-five, two thousand.
Uh, so the thirty-two, that's like top of line stuff, then just add the top of line. Uh, and then the bottom, the last one, the cheapest as you get, like you get rubber boots, which will melt, you got to buy more boots, more stuff, it rips easy.
What's the middle one?
That's the one I'm going to want to go with.
Oh, you want to use the middle, that's what we wanted to know, okay. The twenty-five, fifty, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, why you be giving me two? Tom five.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor? Pose? Motion to carry?
Well, I, this ain't happening, I, how long should we last now?
Another ten years, once we get them.
Ten years?
We better start saving for that now, ten, for ten years from now, because hopefully we don't have another pandemic with cares funding in ten years, I'm just saying, we need to work towards that ten-year, you know, goal.
She's got points.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. Number four.
Three.
Excuse me, three. Motion to approve purchasing a new brush truck for the fire department from Asbury Automotive, branded for approximately twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, using care value funding.
I made most of approved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Pose? Motion to carry? Motion to adjourn?
You just asked to do anybody else's family, you see?
Well, I'll try, does anybody have anything else?
I got, I got something real quick. As everybody knows, I probably am a little bit carried away.
Um, as everybody knows, I probably am a little bit carried away about the signs and stuff like that, the verification of the seat, inside the seat. Uh, we are down employees. I have volunteered to help the guys go around, do signs, clean up around the signs where people can see them. Um, is there a problem with that?
What signs do you?
Rope signs.
The rope.
The ones that go like seventy-nine?
No, ma'am, I'm talking about on the back.
Over the streets, I don't have.
What are you talking about, replacing?
Replacing.
Ordering and replacing or?
Well, Jason's got a camp somewhere, uh, with signs that can be done.
I ain't got it yet.
Thank you, did we have questions? Thank you.
I will have to check on that if I want to.
I got them, I got them.
The district is under budget at this point?
I got, uh, on all the signs in lockup, I don't know what I have right now, sign loss.
I have a question for the county, if they were all, is that something that's possible for you to do?
To volunteer and perform work on it?
Yeah, not ordering or anything like that, just a.
Right. I mean, your department heads have, you know, spending authority that individual council members do job. So any of that needs to be done through the department head. Absolutely, he can volunteer, so.
Well, I expect a rebounded workplace.
Yes.
Can I say something about that, the verification that you was talking about making things look better? I would like the council to consider hiring part-time, possibly Jeanne Schott, that just, just left the council because she's really a dirty person. And paying her for X number of dollars a month to take care of keeping everything trimmed. In front of City Hall, all of the plantings up and down the side of the road. They, they really need maintenance, and the guys do not have time to do it. They absolutely do not. And I'm too old to do all of it. And we, we need to make, that, that's their only job, is to do that. And if you could find somebody, I'm just suggesting Jeanne because she hasn't asked for this, but she has an interest in it. She, she knows what to do, what needs to be done. If you could hire somebody, say, I don't know, ten dollars, ten hours a month to do that, that would just make our city look so much better, in my opinion. Please discuss it at the workshop.
Speaking of signs, we need, that sign on the square is.
It's pathetic looking.
It's pitiful, you're right.
The other sign bad too.
Signs, I mean, come on, let's start out at the, at the beginning of the city here. Because we don't have no, I, I mean, that sign on that square is just pitiful, like you said.
I, I was wondering about maybe, I don't know if anybody would be interested in it, but on those digital signs, you can also advertise. And so businesses could maybe pay X amount of dollars a month.
And see, we would do that. I would pay to have the digital on me.
Yeah, maybe a businesses or whatever it was in our, in our town, that, but what I was, what I also suggested one time, like I talked.
You had actually mentioned it to me.
You know, on our website, to a hundred dollars a year, you know, that's cheap advertising, you know, and it also.
I pay a local, um, newspaper that is only digital, that's only Facebook, or, or, and three hundred dollars a year. I don't have a problem with that.
But I might help pay for our, for our digital, that twenty-five thousand dollar, whatever it is, digital sign, if we could have advertisement on it.
There are probably not a lot of, of people still on the board that were, were there when we were hired, but part of the tenant that, under which we were hired was to promote local businesses. And we started off by going around talking to, we didn't, I didn't know you had a business up until I saw on Facebook that you had a sale, and I didn't, didn't have a clue. So we went around and talked to all the businesses, invited them to have interviews with us, Danny being one of them, and still have yet to get, get anything on that. But we did go around and talk to some, and all that stuff is on the website, and will continue to be on the website. There's probably been no better time than now that the four lane is being completed, to go ahead and, let's go ahead and put that into hyperdrive, let's go ahead and, and start working on that. Whether it's the jackets nest or, and forgive me, I don't know the name of your business.
For all of the dollars.
Now would be that time. Now, if you want to try to get some revenue stream out of the website, I'm going to leave that totally up to you, but I would suggest we use that vehicle to help the businesses in Vernon. And instead of charging them, maybe give them some kind of complimentary exposure at that point, if they want to be more than that, then that's fine.
We don't, uh, we don't mind paying for a little bit of advertising, because as everybody knows, word of mouth is all the jackets has users. And we stay clean and busy, but I don't mind being a little bit more busy.
Well, I'll tell you one thing that ties into that, and since we've been putting the videos of the meetings up, your, your views on your website have skyrocketed. Um, it's crazy. Um, you, you guys have had one or two hits a week for the last several years, and now all of a sudden, you know, you're getting hundreds of hits. So for what it's worth, people are, are watching, they want to see that stuff. So yeah, now would be a good time maybe to refocus on that and to start. So I'll be glad to meet with you guys in whatever capacity to, to figure out where we go from here, or you can do it at a webshop. Frankly, the meetings are already long enough, so I don't want to try to introduce that, but.
So, one last thing, the signs, are we, we've gotten prices on the signs already, will we get?
That's one price.
Okay, you're, you're working on getting another price?
And I know it needs to be at a workshop, like Mr. Golding said, but at all the entrances of Vernon, welcome to Vernon. I know Chad mentioned that when he first started, but that would be really nice with flower boxes, whatever around them, and just kind of make it, you know, instead of, oh, just another little, you know.
A gateway, a gateway into the city.
Yes, a nice entry, like, hey, we want you here, we're happy to see you, stop at our.
Like Manhattan sign.
Stop at our stores, you know.
Manhattan has a beautiful sign.
Dedication, and that's a nice sign, and there's, you know, the world won't pardon it.
So anyway, but maybe we just put that on the workshop.
And maybe you can get some pictures to show us, create a few pictures of what they really look like, and we can people. Can I have a maybe a good one? I made a most good journey today.
Hey, hey, one, one more thing. Hey, the, the, the thing we done at the square, sorry, y'all talking about putting a bench out there? Instead of wasting money on a bench, we have one out here that we can fix and stuff, and it saves us money. I then told Tracy about it, but I wondered if y'all were good with that.
Where's the?
I was going to swing it. It's one of the wood ones, one of the nice ones out here, they're not molded down out here.
Because there had been talk of tea, beans.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of them out there.
There's several out here.
Yeah.
Okay, are they in, they are very nice condition?
Just need to be painted, and I'll do that.
We'll talk, we can look at them and then discuss it.
Yeah.
After that.
Just give up.
At the workshop next time.